I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk lead us in the pledge.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of December 10th, 2013 be approved as amended? And note that item 5D has been added to it. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the following consent agenda as listed in your agenda? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have a special report this evening regarding the Medicaid compliance plan update.
That would be me. Hi. I appreciate your time this evening on this snowy night to hear more about Medicaid. I'm sure is a riveting topic for all of you. But, anyway, the laws of New York State and New York State Office of Medicaid Inspector General require Medicaid providers to develop, adopt, and implement effective compliance programs aimed at detecting waste, fraud, and abuse in the Medicaid program. If the provider or affiliate claims, orders, or receives claims for more than $500,000 annually, that plan is mandatory. And compliance programs promote -- are designed to promote the integrity of the SSHSP or School Supportive Health Services Program, otherwise known as Medicaid, and save Medicaid program dollars by reducing inappropriate payments and maximizing appropriate payments for covered services. While due to the many changes that have occurred in Medicaid regulations, our claiming has not reached the threshold of $500,000, which would have made that program, having a Medicaid compliance program, mandatory. However, the district has reached that threshold in the past, and in an abundance of caution and recognizing that a compliance program reflects best practice, the district has decided to maintain its compliance program voluntarily. So to assess the quality of our compliance program, the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General has supplied school districts, counties, businesses, hospitals, and so on with a self-assessment tool to assist Medicaid compliance officers, Patty Gallagher in our case, and others in assessing the effectiveness of the compliance program. So that self-assessment tool encourages entities to review eight required areas. And in brief, they are, just to give you a hint of them, written policies and procedures, where to look at designating an employee with vested responsibility for running the plan, we are to assess our training and education, communication lines to the reporting officer and to the governing body, which is you folks, disciplinary policies, a system for routine identification of risk areas, a system for responding to compliance issues, and a policy of non-intimidation or non-retaliation. So with that tool in hand, our Medicaid Compliance Committee met last week, and the committee consists of Patty Gallagher, our compliance officer, Bill Maloney, who's our treasurer, as you know, myself, and Gwenda Buckman, our Director of Special Education. We went through the eight required areas, looking to see that we had documentation that each one of those areas was, in fact, being addressed within our compliance program. And we spent pretty significant discussion on not only looking at making sure that we had compliance benchmarks, but also looking at ways we could improve our own analysis of risk. So during that meeting, we came up with two additions to our compliance program that are enhancements beyond the document that you've received that shows our crosswalk from our policies and procedures to the eight required areas. I just want to briefly summarize those for you. The first is our district treasurer, Bill Maloney, has designed, developed a process of reconciling Medicaid claims through the entire claiming process. And for those of you familiar with the Medicaid process, it's not a straight-up, we submit a claim and we get a payment back. There are denied payments, pending payments, things that can kind of float in the system for a period of time. So Bill has worked to design a reconciliation tool that we're going to be using monthly. And Bill, myself, and our Assistant Treasurer, Lily Shore, will be using that document and reviewing any of the claims to make sure that we are maximizing payment to the district. If there are any pending claims, we're going to look at how they're pending, what we're looking at, if there's a denied claim, to see if we can resubmit that claim in a way that would result in payment to the district. The second improvement is a more general one. A consortium of districts from BOCES-1 is now meeting regularly to design a static model of a exemplar plan. The state doesn't give us one. They do to hospitals, but they didn't provide schools with one. So a group of us got together and said, you know, it really would help if there was a subcommittee that met regularly to develop this exemplar document that could be referenced by districts. Obviously, we'd need to tweak it a little bit for each little district because you're going to do things differently, but that would cover all the compliance categories. So myself and several other members of the BOCES Regional Medicaid Compliance Officers Group are meeting regularly right now. In fact, our next meeting is December 12th to continue that work. And I look forward to being able to bring that to you folks next year when we can truly say we have agreed upon an exemplary document. So with that in mind, with both the assessment tool and the recent improvements to our practice that have contributed to the Medicaid Compliance Committee's recommendation that the Board of Ed approve the district's 2013-14 Medicaid compliance program, with that approval, the program can be certified at the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General by December 31st in compliance with New York State laws and regulations.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Barb?
Being intimately involved with Medicaid compliance issues on a daily basis and reading through this, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful document and really very good. And it's good to know that, because I don't think I was aware that BOCES-1, you know, you had this consortium. That's even better because to be the leaders in the state that, you know, says you have to do it yet, or the federal government says you have to do it yet, you know, has nothing for you to go by. Congratulations. Now, this is just one question I have because I have heard that there are some districts opting to not go with Medicaid reimbursement. Is that something?
There are. We've asked for a comprehensive list.
Okay.
And that has not arrived on our doorsteps. But what we have been able to do is to look at the listing of schools that are participating in the Random Moment Time Study. It's a requirement for the cost expenditure report. It's how we determine what a payment is going to be within the Medicaid system. So if you can see a district that's not submitting to the Random Moment Time, you know that they're not claiming. So there is a way of sitting with a kind of chart of all the districts in the state and crosswalking between them. To be honest, I haven't done that, but I, offline, I can tell you a couple that aren't. But anyway, we've been reported that over 60 are no longer claiming.
And just for people that don't realize, as a speech pathologist, I, who have Medicaid eligible students on my caseload, I, as of right now, have a 30-minute daily time during my schedule to have to do these notes, and it probably takes 45 minutes to an hour to do them on my caseload.
At least.
And I'm just one person.
Right. Right. And that's one of our concerns. It's why we've made, our compliance committee has been really careful in consideration of our practices so that we're not overwhelming. Some districts, for example, are reporting on every child, whether Medicaid or not.
Yes.
And that's just, that would require hiring significant staff to eat up that time, you know, to be using up that time. So it didn't make sense to us in this particular district with this particular demographic to be doing that.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, and have a safe drive home.
Thank you. You too. Board members, as you know, this is up for approval later on in our agenda. We now move on to our visitor's speaking time, and I do not have any indication that somebody wishes to address the board. So next is our student representative. Good evening, Gwen.
Hi. Okay. So just an update. We, as a school, kind of did with all the volunteer clubs and student council, did a Thanksgiving holiday drive, food drive, and that was a huge success. I think we filled like two kind of big cars full of food that we had gathered from the social studies classes, and that went to the Penfield food shelf. As far as kind of like fundraisers for the holiday season right now in December, PHS Ambassador Club and the secretaries are running a fundraiser for Penfield families in need by supporting the Giving Tree. And what they're actually doing is they're kind of selling like elf grams that people can send to their friends with little notes for a dollar, and all that money goes to the Giving Tree. Leo's Club, every year, adopts a family from Habitat for Humanity and raises money to buy gifts for that family that they can't possibly afford, and they wrap them for that family, and then they give them to them with cards and nice things like that. A new group, Aid Through Music, is playing holiday tunes December 28th at the Mustard Seed Soup Kitchen this year. That's a new kind of club where they go out in the community and they play music. It's kind of a group of musicians that formed it. And NHS is doing their annual Atria Get Together with Residents, and that's Tuesday, December 17th. So upcoming things, they're happening at the high school. The senior kind of car giveaway information is starting to come out, so people are starting to go to the dealership and sign up and everything fun like that. Auditions for the Spring Musical start in January, and the Spring Musical is Footloose. Yearbooks are still on sale, and they're on sale all year, but I think it's just before the break when they are $60, and then after the break, they go up to $65. You can buy those on the website. The mentoring program starts after break, so that's when high school students go to the elementary schools and take one student and mentor them. Today, the girls' basketball team actually has a home game at Fairport, starts at 7:45. So that's happening right now. Next Wednesday, so December 18th, the future Democrats and the young Republicans are having a debate. This Friday, Japanese Club is running a video game tournament in the Commons, where it's $5 to enter, and there are apparently $20 gift card prizes for people who win. Class rings are arriving on the 16th, which is Monday. Another reminder, Penfield Hockey is playing Sunday, December 22nd, at Frontier Field at 7:00. And you can actually buy tickets in the counseling department. Student coun -- I'm sorry, I have a really long list. Student Council actually just met with Dr. Buckman yesterday to talk about tardy restricted. We had a good conversation about different things that Student Council finds difficult with that policy and then reasons why it's in place, and we had a really good conversation. So after the break, we're going to draw up a possible, like the policy now, and then maybe some changes that we have in mind, and then submit it to Dr. Putnam. Masterminds competes on next Monday. The math and the English department are starting their SAT sign-ups for juniors and sophomores. The half-day went well. I was there. It was nice. It was short, but I actually did a lot of learning. And on that day, Mr. Gabey had, for Gov. students, so it was Merritt and Gabey, Murphy and Burns came in to do like a little conversation with us. It was like question-and-answer about doing a local campaign. So that was really nice to talk to them about it because they had kind of been local entrepreneurs and businessmen who had never been in the political scene, so they kind of talked about their experiences. And lastly, the 11th grade English classes are working out speeches for the Rotary Club Oratorical Contest, which happens every year. So that is all.
Thank you. High school is busy. Any questions or comments for Gwen? All right. Yes?
The half-day, you had some reservations, I guess, right, prior to it, and you say now that it worked out well. So can you elaborate?
Yes. Well, students always were having some, just like questions about how much was going to get done, and although some class periods were like workdays, which is useful. For me personally, I had like a lesson in math, and I had some other lessons that we actually did. So my experience, I don't know for how others was, but my experience was, there was learning. I don't know, I give the teachers credit for kind of like jamming in as much as they can in 20 minutes. I know some people had quizzes that day. So I think that was another kind of like draw-in, like you have to come to school Friday because we have a quiz. So that would be my perspective. I don't know.
I give you credit because when you have, you know, maybe a preconceived notion or, you know, an idea of how it might go, then you go in with an open mind, and then you see it works out well. So, you know, good for you. I think that's something to be proud of, and I appreciate you sharing that with us.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. Any other questions or comments for Gwen? All right. Thank you. We now move on to superintendent's reports. Dr. Graham?
Okay. Great. We've got, as always, there's students and staff honors. We added something that's not reflected in at least the original agenda. I had some information about the issue that's happening in Wayne County related to sales tax and how it'll affect the Wayne County residents that are members of our district as well and our geographic line, so we're going to talk about that. And then we've got Dr. Putnam, our high school principal, to talk about the course selection guide for next year. That's something that you're going to hear about tonight, and we're going to approve it at the next meeting. We like to have that kind of Board of Education sanctioning of our academic program. And then we're going to hear information about Capitol Project. Our students' staff honors are with our eight PHS students who have been selected to perform with the RPO, the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra Festival Chorale for the Annual Holiday Pops Concert Series. Ellie Anthony, Leah Crethorne, Gabby Delas, Elizabeth Manchola, Sammy Martin, Tess Perry, Abby Prem, and Sydney Stell. The students will perform seven concerts between December 19th and 22nd in the Kodak Hall, Eastman Theater. Just an outstanding accomplishment, and it's going to be, I'm sure, a wonderful show, and what a great honor for these eight students and for Penfield. We did have our fall athletics season, and we wanted to explicitly identify what we see as a connection between athletics participation and academic achievement. In this case, our school, Penfield High School, has earned a School of Distinction Award. It's awarded to schools that have 100% of their teams achieve an average above 90%. And the following list is a list of the fall teams, and we have their averages right next to them. Cross-country, cross-country, boys and girls, 96 and above there. Hockey, 94.8. That would be field hockey, girls' field hockey, right? Football, 92.8. Golf and gymnastics at 90 and 92. Soccer, both soccers, above 95. Girls' swimming, above 95. Tennis, above 95. Volleyball, just under 95. It's hard to believe. I just, I'm actually amazed, I'm looking at this list. I mean, it's, and there's, hey, Pete Shambos here tonight, our athletic director. And this is something that comes out of Pete all the time emphasizing that connection from athletics to academics, and certainly there is high correlation. See it again. Congratulations to all of our coaches for emphasizing that and teachers for working with our students.
It's a lot to be proud of.
It sure is. It's just amazing that they can do that much. It inspires me to do more, physically, anyway. Now, one of the things that's been popping up lately to our east is what's been happening in Wayne County related to the Wayne County Board of Supervisors. Is that right, John? They have a different name for their entity there. But they've been talking about removing the sales tax line item in their budget where they allocate sales tax to the different school districts. And they've been organizing in that county, the school districts and superintendents to fight against that, to show their argument for why it should continue. And Penfield, we do have Wayne County residents that attend our schools, and they will be affected. So we scrambled the fighter jets in the last few days to try to figure out how they would be affected. And we did determine that there is a differentiated effect for those county residents in Wayne County that attend our schools. Their school tax rate would be affected differently through the way that the formula is calculated. And what we wanted to do, I think, is make a statement that says what we think about that particular issue. And we worded a resolution. It might be a little bit different. We've got it up on the line. We did a little bit of wordsmithing on it before or after this was created here. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark Sansucci, who will read the version of it that we want to adopt.
Sure. It is a complicated issue, and I think it's important to understand that essentially what's in discussion in Wayne County is $5.4 million worth of sales tax revenues that the county, that Wayne County shares with school districts whose boundaries are within Wayne County. And that includes our school district. School district boundaries don't neatly follow other municipal boundaries. So in addition to Penfield, there are a number of other school districts who, while they're not really in Wayne County, have a portion of the school in Wayne County. So Webster's, Juan Victor, Port Byron, Phelps, Clifton Springs, and of course, Penfield. And what happens in that case is the sales tax that the districts receive from Wayne County essentially serves as a credit against the property taxes in that county. So when that's removed, the way the formula works is the property tax formula results in an increased rate. So as you can see here, if this were, if this initiative were successful, the tax rate in this year's budget, the tax rate would be an additional 6.3% or about $1.53 per thousand of assessed value. So for a $100,000 house, the tax bill, because of the reduction in the sales tax, would increase by $153. So in Wayne County, that $5.4 million only represents about 14% of the total sales tax that's distributed. That amount's been frozen for a number of years by the county. The total collections are around $38 million. So a fraction of that, about 14%, goes to, on a pure pupil basis, to those residents. So obviously, it, we believe unfairly impacts our Wayne County residents who are interested in adding our voice to the voices in Wayne County that are protesting this. And so we drafted for your consideration later in the agenda a resolution. We've amended it a little bit since then, so I'd like to read the amended resolution. What it says is, "Be it resolved that the Penfield Board of Education urges the Wayne County Board of Supervisors to continue the longstanding commitment of sharing sales tax revenues with local school districts. We recognize that many municipalities are currently facing financial hardships, but eliminating this crucial funding to schools will negatively impact our students and our taxpayers. Specifically, if the sales tax is revoked, the required calculation of sales and property tax will cause Wayne County residents who live in the Penfield Central School District to see a significant increase in their tax rates. The loss of sales tax funding in the current year would have resulted in an additional 6.3% tax increase or $1.53 per thousand of assessed value for our Wayne County residents. We are opposed to the proposal to discontinue the sales tax sharing program and the additional burden it would place on our taxpayers."
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? Mark.
Mark, so the wording you added, talking about the computations, is this something that's an automatic activity or is this something we would choose to do just to get away?
It's a part of the, it is required by the way taxes are calculated. So it's not something that's optional to us. There's a Monroe County credit for sales tax and a Wayne County credit for sales tax. And each county, you know, gets their proportional share of that. So if the calculation would, it's not optional to us.
And another question. And is this impacted any way by the 2% tax cap formulations?
Well, I think what, it will be, let me, let me work through that for a bit. The 2% tax cap limit is on the levy amount. So without this revenue source, and this revenue source is independent of the, there's no exclusion for this in the cap, so schools would need to raise their levies to make up for this, to make up for this amount, and they would be impacted by the tax cap in Wayne County. In Monroe County, the relatively smaller share of our county, or of our portion of Wayne County, wouldn't impact the tax cap, but the way taxes are calculated would cause that shift and drive up those tax rates. Not the levy, but the rates in Wayne County would go up. The levy would still be impacted, would still be restrained by the cap. So it's a complicated issue, but even with the tax cap, the rates in Wayne County would still go up significantly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? John?
I think the bigger picture to look at, too, in regard to this, is, you know, the counties and those towns in those counties, they're all striving to find more dollars. And it'd be interesting to see how many of those towns are under the tax levy cap or over it, you know, going forward. But this is the way the future's going to look in some of the more rural areas. The scramble for money, and where you don't have the sales tax set by law, as we do in Monroe County, you're at the mercy of the Board of Supervisors. And each supervisor is a part of the Board of Supervisors, so they're really there on behalf of their town, which is unique just to rural counties. So I really feel bad for the school districts and ourselves in those areas because I think that was the same group of school districts that tried to do some consolidation, or maybe it was Ontario County, but, and they're denied the ability to even consolidate to save dollars. So this isn't going away, and it, you know, could be on our doorstep, too, at any time soon.
Thank you, John. Karen?
Mark, not all that long ago, Monroe County pulled sales tax from underneath us, and there was a discussion about it, and then they ended up paying us back, basically. Do you see this going that same route? Are they filed the same restrictions or not?
In, I think they're two distinctly different. I'm not as familiar with Wayne County, but as I understand it, it's by law in Monroe County. So there was the Morin Ryan Sales Tax Sharing Agreement that codified how sales tax was supposed to be distributed in Monroe County. My understanding is, is that in Wayne County, there's no such agreement. So it's by resolution, it's the county budget, really, or the Board of Supervisors budget that determines how that sales tax had been shared. There was in place for a number of years an agreement that schools in Wayne County would receive a third of the sales tax receipts. A number of years ago, that was frozen at the $5.4 million levy amount, and it hasn't changed. That $5.4 million that's distributed in Wayne County to schools hasn't changed, even though sales tax receipts have increased. So the county and the town have experienced the increased, you know, amounts of sales tax, while the schools have been limited to the total of $5.4 million. So that tells me that if that were possible, then through the budget process, it's possible for them to reduce it or eliminate it.
Thank you, Mark. John?
And the Morin Ryan Plan that you're talking about is simply, at its simplest point, a negotiation between the city and the county. So we're always at their mercy, and I'm not sure when that term is up, but we're really a byproduct and hopefully have input into that negotiation because it's, you know, given to give and take on both sides, so.
Camille?
I just have a question. Given that this resolution came about just today because of the hard work of you and the district office, based on a meeting that happened just this morning, is there a mechanism in place whereby Carol could share, or Mark could share with his counterparts and with the other school boards, this resolution, as we discussed, it may not have, we don't know what effect it would have, but we agreed that it was a good idea to quickly come out with something. I just thought maybe you could share it out so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel, and they might be able to take this kind of action too.
Certainly. I think that we could share that with the superintendents of the other schools. We've, we're in the process of developing with Nancy Bradstreet a plan to make sure we communicate to our residents about this. So we know that, for example, well, after you pass the resolution tonight, we'll want to do a press release to announce and make sure that, to the extent possible, the media picks up, you know, this board's opposition to it. We also intend to send a letter to our Wayne County, and we hope that that letter goes out tomorrow. We're aiming to send it out tomorrow, notifying our residents, the 700 or so families that live in Wayne County, but in the Penfield School District, how this might impact them. We want them to know that in advance of the Board of Supervisors' action, which I understand may be on the 17th. So it's a very tight timeframe, but we want to make sure that we get the word out. And I think notifying other school districts ought to be a part of that conversation.
Okay. Thanks.
We can probably also notify Monroe County School Board, you know, part of our plan to let them know that we have adopted this, and Georgie Siegel would, you know, be able to share it with the other school boards.
That's a fine idea, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
All right. Board members, we will be voting on this resolution later on under new business. So thank you, Mark, for being on top of it for us.
And I appreciate the board's consideration of this, considering that we developed it today and brought it to you tonight. Thank you for that. And now we've got our principal, Dr. Thomas Putnam, who will be sharing with us the insides and the outsides of the fabulous Course Selection Guide, which is very long, and I know the board's been perusing over it for the last three or four weeks to be able to have a full understanding of our offerings.
I have a quiz. It's 91 pages long, so I hope everybody looked at it closely.
We'll take that quiz on the half day.
On the half day.
Yeah. The Course Description Guide at the high school is, it's long, it's 91 pages. It has to show all of the offerings we have and then a lot of the detail around those offerings. Because of that, I had to whittle down my PowerPoint presentation from approximately 91 slides down to a nice, just a couple, to try to showcase all that we have to offer at the high school. So the Course Description Guide that is online right now, right on the high school page, if you go to the high school page and then to the counseling section, you can see the Course Description Guide. And it includes all the courses that may potentially be scheduled for the following school year, 2014 to 15, and all the departments that we offer. And we also include the programs at Eastern Monroe Career Center, also known as EMCC, for our students who attend half-day programs at Monroe One Career Center. The course offerings, I just, we always make sure that students are aware and teachers and want the community to know too, is we don't offer every class that's in the Course Description Guide, but the offerings are dependent upon enrollment and budgetary constraints, primarily staffing. And so we take a look at that and working with the board and district office, our threshold is 15. So we need to have 15 students in a class to run that course. So we look at that very closely. Just, there are, an overview of this is that at the high school, we offer a well-rounded Course Selection Guide in order to support students at all academic and developmental levels. We have rigorous course offerings that include honors, advanced placement, dual credit options. We also have Regents courses, support classes, extended courses to support students who are struggling but still are on track for that Regents diploma. And we believe really strongly as a staff that all students should challenge themselves academically and work to build academic excellence in all courses and at all levels. With the Course Description Guide, there are no gates. There's no true prerequisite that says a student needs to have or maintain a certain GPA to be in a class. It really does come down to teacher recommendations, counselor's recommendations, and then ultimately a family decision on what's the best track and best course for a student to take. And we utilize, regardless of what classes students take, a really strong commitment, and I talked about a couple of weeks, a couple of board meetings ago with our school improvement plan, the high school's commitment to the concept of response intervention. And students can receive support for all the courses, whether it's a Regents course and AP course, through many different avenues at the high school. We have department instructional centers, an academic support center, after-school time with teachers, we have study seal classes, reading intervention courses, and other school day structures to support students at all levels. And we're very proud of those. So points of interest, sort of our highlights as I go through, and there's lots there with 91 pages, but I wanted to touch upon at least a few, and that is that we have dual credit options both through Monroe Community College and Finger Lakes Community College. I'm very excited to announce that Finger Lakes Community College offers through their program Gemini College 101, which we call college composition. And next year, that will be free for students. There'll be no dual credit cost, and that's for not just us, but all schools connected with FLCC. There will be a minimum charge of potentially $20 for the technology fee, but no cost for that, for those potential college credits that they can earn through College 101. And we also partner with Syracuse University with their Syracuse University Project Advanced, also known as SUPA, and the Rochester Institute of Technology through our project Lead the Way courses. So there's a little symbol up there, it's tough to see on the screen, but it says dual credit with two arrows, and you'll find that throughout the Course Description Guide. On any course that has dual credit, it has that symbol, so you can be aware of which courses are dual credit. And then on pages 13 and 14, we actually list out the dual credit courses. The Course Description Guide is broken down by department, but on page 13 and 14, again, we go over all of the dual credit courses that students can take. And then we have advanced placement options that we're very proud of. In math, science, English, LoT, social studies, and music, students can take a plethora of AP classes while at the high school. We also have the Penfield Futures Project, which I know Mr. Dozer has been here to present on, and we've had some workshops. And we're also moving forward with offering three fully online classes. Two of the three are taught by Penfield teachers, and that's the Business of Music and Sociology honors, which is also the course that students can get Syracuse University credit for. And we're also offering online Cinema Studies, which is through Bosie's Number One, but our students will have an option to take that class. That class, as well as two others I'll mention in a minute, are new courses pending board approval. And what we've typically done in the years past is I come back in March to talk about which courses I'm asking for board approval on, because we don't have numbers yet of how many kids are going to take those classes. But you having an advanced look at the Course Description Guide, and I'm glad that I'm presenting it early, so you can have an idea of what we're looking at, and we might not have enough students to run that course, but we're hopeful that we can and the future can live on. The other thing I just, as I sit in the audience, I started to think of things, and so I know I leave people off when I give points of interest, but I do just want to also give a plug to our physical education department that just went to the state conference and presented on how we run our PE classes here. And I saw some photographs, and it was amazing, because it was, it looked more like a sit-in than a presentation, because the workshop was so full, they had no chairs, and people actually came in and sat on the floor. And they presented because in Penfield High School, in ninth and 10th grade, you have one choice for your physical education class, but in 11th and 12th grade, we offer electives, which are outlined in the Course Description Guide, and students can actually choose electives in their PE world that make more sense to them. You know, we offer lifeguarding, we offer dance and defense, we offer a plethora of PE classes, so juniors and seniors actually have a lot of choice in the electives that they want to take for physical education. There's another little symbol here. These are the three courses that are in the Course Description Guide pending board approval, and that little new symbol is also, you can find in the Course Description Guide. Cinema Studies, I've already talked about, which is the online course via the Futures Project. We are also offering a new class in, it's an elective LoT class, so it doesn't go towards a three-year LoT sequence, but it's Latin for the career-minded, and that course is aimed for students in ninth through 12th grade who are interested in a career field of medicine, law, SAT prep, ACT prep. It really is the root background of Latin to focus students, because it is, it is a language that we see in everyday English as well. And we're really excited for that class. And then our third class we're asking for a potentially approval for, if we get enough students to take the class, is Applied Physics. And the Applied Physics class, right now, we teach Regents physics, honors physics, and AP physics. And what we're looking for is this niche of students who want a fourth-year physics course, because many of our four-year colleges ask to see physics on that diploma, but are students who are not necessarily on track with their math. And so most students, we find the most success in physics when they have either taken or are taking Algebra II Trig. This course is designed for students who have gotten through algebra but may not be in Algebra II Trig yet. We've also seen an increase of students who are looking at taking physics in the younger grades because of our enrichment at, with living environment at Bay Trail. So students are coming up and asking for more science classes. This course is unique, because it won't have a lab connected to it, but there'll be extension activities if students want to get the 1,200 lab minutes to challenge the Regents exam at the end of June. So students will have the option to take the course for a fourth year of science or a third year of science, but they'll also have an opportunity to apply a little bit more with enrichment and sit for the Regents exam. And we see this course as a gateway for students who may struggle in science, but if they take this course, it sets them up to take AP Physics I during their senior year. So if a junior took this class, they could potentially prep themselves to sit for an AP class for a student who typically may not have sat for an AP class in the past. And it works out well, because AP Physics has changed their curriculum, college board has changed their curriculum, so all the high schools around, New York State, oh, nationally, but especially in New York State where we teach physics typically to seniors, has changed. So it used to be Physics A, B, and C. We've always taught Physics A, and next year, it will be Physics I, II, and C. So we are focusing on Physics I. Like most of our local schools, we're going to focus on Physics I, which is an AP class. Ultimately, students can take three credits if a school taught all three physics classes. We don't have, based on our data, the number of students who are looking to take three physics classes in high school. So most districts are choosing to stick with Physics I. The scheduling process overview, so we take this 91-page catalog and we put it online, but it doesn't end there and it doesn't start there. So just a little overview for the board and for the community. We have a teacher advisement week every year, which is typically in November. We have gotten through the teacher advisement week, and that is that teachers spend a week in the class going over, at least one day during that week, to just go over what are the choices for next year within that department. And then we open the teacher portal on Infinite Campus, and teachers of the core departments, being math, science, social studies, and English, make recommendations on what level course the student, they believe the student should take the following year. After we close that, we open up the student portal, which actually opens up tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. And the student portal is open for students to go on and put in their requests for what they would like to take the following year. We will leave that open through December 18th. In eighth grade, we actually have a meeting on the 15th with eighth-grade parents, and then we open up the window for them to make their course selections, January 15th to 21st. After we get all that information, we get through all the data, and then the counselors start meeting individually with every single student at the high school and at eighth grade. Our high school counselors go down to eighth grade. They meet every single student to start actually scheduling what they want to take the following year. In third quarter, all of those recommendations go back out to teachers, and teachers get to see what they recommended and what the student actually signed up for, and the teacher has an opportunity to change the recommendation, because we're making recommendations on what a student should take next year in December. And so doing a third quarter review allows the teacher to say, actually, the student really stepped it up, they really are applying themselves, and we think it should be an honors course. If there's, we look strongly at the teacher's recommendation, because they know the student best, they're in the classroom with the student. After that, we have a letter sent home to families that outlines the course request for the following school year, and we give one final opportunity to make changes, which is typically in April. And then at the end of April, we lock Infinite Campus down, because we have to allow no scheduled changes take place, so we can actually build the master schedule. I like to think that Infinite Campus is just a computer system where you push the button and it schedules all of that, but it's not true. I have an incredible staff, but Andrea Wies is our technology expert at the high school who thinks in the world of ones and zeros, like the matrix is what I always tell Andrea, and she works to build the schedule. And that typically takes us through July, and when we have the schedules finalized, then counselors look through every single schedule to make sure that students aren't missing a class or missing a graduation requirement. A lot of hands-on work throughout the summer, and then students get their schedule online, it goes online at the end of August, on the same day as Operation Welcome. Freshmen at Penfield High School always get their schedule a day before anybody else has our way to welcome freshmen to the high school, that they get their schedule before anybody else does. And then when we start the school year, because of all of this work that goes into building the schedule, our policy at the high school is we do not allow add drop for two weeks, because we have really, and it's gotten so much better, but it's so much work from the counseling department and the teachers to create this schedule, that we want students to realize how important it is to think carefully about the scheduling process. We always add a course if they're missing a graduation requirement, if they want to go up in rigor, we always will take a look at that and look to change that if they need to add an additional class. But we typically ask students to give us two weeks, try the class out, and then at the two-week mark, we go through and make the necessary educational changes. And we just stress so much that the reason we do that is because we build our budget, and I build my staffing budget, that I bring to district office on my staffing based on what students are signing up for. So if we just let everybody change, I understand it would be so much easier, but we would have no consistency with the staffing budget that we need to try to create and try to be fiscally responsible at the high school. I told you I had a lot, I think I did a good job trying to narrow it down from 91 pages, but.
Thank you.
Yes.
Really liked your 91 pages up there.
That's good.
Thank you. Very nicely condensed. Board members, questions or comments?
Karen?
Latin for the career-minded, does that have to be taught by a certified Latin teacher? What's the?
It's a great question. Teachers could teach one course out of their content area contractually and legally through New York State, but it is going to be taught by our Latin teacher, who speaks fluent Latin, truly understands the language, and I think she'd probably be the best person to teach that class.
Thank you. Catherine?
With the dual credit with the various colleges, does the student end up with a high school diploma only, or is there the start of a college transcript somewhere?
That's a, that's a great question. They get a high school diploma with a transcript with our course title on it, and then I'll use Syracuse University as an example. When they complete the class, we work with, we work with people from Syracuse University that come and audit our classes all throughout the year, and then they actually have a Syracuse transcript with the college course on it. So for example, like with the FLCC course, we call it college composition, but they would get a transcript from Finger Lakes Community College that said that they were, they successfully completed three credits of English 101.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Barb?
Is it just limited to the students to take that cinema class? Can taxpayers take?
You know, it's not even a funny question, because the answer is, right now, it is only open to students, but part of that Futures Project is always looking outside the box. And so we have talked about how do we bring in the community and offer such online courses, but as of right now, as we try to build the Futures process, it's just open for students.
Thank you.
Mark?
You said you have to have 15 students sign up for a course, and that's in March. What happens if you have people add or drop when you're at that cusp after we approve a program, or one does not come up for approval because of that?
Sure. We, that's why we do the letter, and it's close. So if we have, if we have less than 15 and we're not going to offer the class, and I don't come back to ask for that granted approval, we don't run the class. And we always have to be weary of the fact that if we have 15, a student may drop the class for the fact that they moved, the fact that it didn't work in their schedule, or because, you know, we really did review it, investigate, and it wasn't educationally valid reason, and the course is dropped. So that does happen sometimes. We're always shooting for more than 15 students in a class.
So if we, if you have 15 people and we approve the class and someone leaves, I mean, is there a commitment to the students then that they mean, is there a commitment to the students then that that class goes on even if we're below 15?
If it's, it depends on the timeline. So if, if, once we hit that summertime, if that class is scheduled, then, then we're running the class. If there's, we've never had the issue, but if it really drops significantly, if something took place, we always have the ability to, to review and make changes over the summer and call students in. But we've never had in a situation where we've had to completely take a class out of the schedule without students knowing what was happening.
Thank you.
But that does happen when we schedule classes and we think a class is going to run, and the student selected a class that doesn't have enough. Then once again, our incredible counselors are calling every student down, making parent phone calls to say, we need a, we need a second or a third alternative because the two classes you wanted to take aren't going, aren't going to run based on numbers.
Quinn?
For the online classes, are, is there like a scheduled time in your schedule for, like, working on those classes? I know that that had been some talk with like the hybrid classes, or is it just completely outside of your school day when you take an online course?
That's a great question. So for faculty, for staff, it is a, a set period in their day because it's part of their five contractually teaching sections. So if Mr. Graves teaches sociology online, let's just say, period five, he would have online sociology, but there would be no students in his classroom, but that would be time for him to work on the course. For students, it would be completely dependent on a student's schedule. So a student in theory could take, fill their schedule completely, plus take an online class and do all of the work at home. Or a student could say, I want a study hall placed in my schedule, and in my study hall, I'm going to be doing that work. But you wouldn't be in the classroom with the teacher on your schedule in, in any way.
Any other questions or comments? Karen?
Regarding the dual credit in the SUPA information, a lot of our kids are able to take enough courses so that when they go to a four-year school, or if they do a two-plus-two kind of thing, almost a full semester of credit, which allows them flexibility in their schedule, and also they can do internships then through, through college. I mean, it's really an amazing, cost-effective way to earn college credit that we offer the kids in Penfield. It just blows me away. I have a, my oldest daughter took advantage of that. She's a senior going into her next semester, is her last semester for undergrad, and she's looking at internships and opportunities because she has so much behind her. She didn't even need this last semester. So I'll be forever grateful to Penfield for offering that opportunity, and I hope that kids take advantage of it and really see the cost savings that these partnerships allow.
Thank you.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Another quick comment. You have the limited drop ad when, when the school year starts, and you're asking for the kids to try everything for two weeks. Aside from that, just that logistics behind the incredible amount of work, I just think it's a great thing for people, we kind of talked about it before, when you're unsure of something, you know, to give it a chance. And I think two weeks is a good amount of time to be able to figure out, you know, wow, I, I thought I wasn't going to like this, and I really do like this, or, you know, I thought it wasn't for me, and, but I'm glad I know for sure. So I think it's a very wise move in the whole scheme of things, and I just wanted to comment on that.
Last year, we went from a three, a three-week wait to a two-week wait. This, this year was the first year we made that change, and we're going to continue that. And it was really just sort of changing the, the culture of drop ad. What we've tend to find is, you're absolutely right, the vast majority of kids that put in a schedule change request after the first week or second say, I think I'll stick, I think I'll stick out. I think I like this class.
That's great.
So it's those, it's those jitters that, that all of us get with the new class, and maybe this was too hard, and maybe I bit off more than I could chew.
Yeah.
But the vast majority end up staying right where they are because they, they like it.
Great.
Okay. Can I ask you regarding the ad drop, uh, you know, sounds a lot like what happens in colleges. However, it seems like there's the possibility for add, but not for drop. So what about the student who really wanted a rigorous schedule but starts off the school and, and this is just too hard? AP is just not working, and even the student is struggling, you're trying to help them. So are they allowed to, to drop?
We, those are hard conversations. I would say that we look at all of them individually based on the situation, but we typically ask for two weeks, to stick it out for two weeks and see how you're doing. It really goes back to the amount of onus we put on the teacher recommendations. And so we have, those are hard conversations, but the counselors and the teachers do a very nice job, whereas if I'm the classroom teacher and I've seen your work and I'm not recommending you for AP, it's, it's a valid reason. It's in, this is why, because of the workload, because of the rigorous thinking, because of the critical thinking, that staying in a Regents-level course might be better for you. So that's what we, one of the pieces of data that we'll look at is, did the student take the teacher's recommendation, or were they truly trying to challenge themselves? Do we have meetings? We have lots of meetings in the summer to say, this might not be the best choice for you. And then it's that hard conversation, which is now that you've made that choice, and we've had all these conversations, we still want you to stick it out for two weeks because, because it's important that you give it a try. I would say that all of them are looked at very, very carefully. The reason, one of the other reasons we changed it from three weeks to two is because it's a transitional period where, where they don't lose too much instruction and we can get them back on track. But all of them, the schedule change forms, it's a form that they fill out, they have to get their parent's signature, the counselor speaks to the teachers, and we look at them all individually. So there are times we make a change, but we, we do our best to keep it at that two-week. It really, it's a history lesson for, for the high school because five years ago, it was the drop ad was around the corner and down the hall, and students were asking for schedule changes to get to the same lunch with their friend. We have that a lot with Bay Trail because they want to be with House A, because that's where they were, and they, they, they only know House A. And what we always find is, you know, by about five weeks in, they're friends with people in different grade levels, different houses. It's just that comfort piece. So by, by saying stick it out for, for two weeks, it's, it works out really well. But again, we really, and I would just encourage parents when they go on through their students' Infinite Campus to help pick out their course request for next year, is to look at the teacher recommendations. It's not set in stone, but the teacher's been with your child for, for 15 heading into 20, 20 weeks. They probably have some valid reasons on, on why they recommended them for the course that they did.
Very well. Thank you. I do appreciate your answer. I always have the concern for the student who really want it rigor, but do we let them struggle the whole year with an AP class when they could, you know, be doing brilliantly in another one? But thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Those changes that were up there were only changes that we'll make during the two-week time period.
Sure.
So a student who's in AP, who's really struggling, absolutely. We have meetings, we talk with the teacher and talk with the family, and, and we make those changes all year long because we want the students to be in, in the right spot.
Okay. My other question is, how are parents going to find out that the portal is opening tomorrow morning?
There will be a wonderful Connect Ed voicemail with me tomorrow night that goes out to all parents.
Excellent.
Followed with an email. Yep. So we do a Connect Ed, letting them know that, to look at the email for all the, the detailed directions and walk through the process.
Very well. Thank you. If you can express our appreciation to all the teachers for all the hard work they've put in in the past couple of weeks advising students individually, you know, listening to students in my car, you know, more than my own, and, uh, you know, hearing that this teacher specifically told them to do this. It's a lot of time on the part of our teachers, but like you said, they know our students, and that really makes a big difference in their schedule. So if you could please let them know how much we appreciate all they're doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my compliments to Dr. Putnam and his staff for an outstanding process and a great program. And one of the things that I had come across in reading some of the research about parental involvement at all the different levels, it's, it's pretty easy to see where you can be involved at the elementary school level. Middle school starts to separate. Some of that's developmental level of the child. In the high school, it's kind of like, oh, boy, what can I do? One of the most important things parents can do at the high school level is to ensure that their child is taking a rigorous set of coursework. And this is an excellent opportunity right here where your partner, looking at it online, trying to encourage them to take that challenging coursework. That's one of the best things that parents can do in terms of being involved at the high school level. It sets the foundation for everything that happens in the future. And one of the other things is that freshman year is very important. So the eighth grade, parents that are going to have that opportunity in January, that's very important as well. The freshman year is really one-third of, of the coursework that colleges consider for admission. Because by the time you're applying to colleges, it's really just based on the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, and if you had some, uh, high school coursework in eighth grade. So very important, a couple of months here for parents and for kids. Our capital project vote. Dr. Sansucci?
Thank you.
So what do you?
As the board knows, we've been in development of a capital project for the past many months. We've had numerous community, we've had two community forums, we've had numerous communications with the public. Tonight's a significant event because in tonight's agenda are two, are resolutions scheduling the vote on February 13th for both the district-wide security project and for the athletics and physical education improvement project. So I won't, because we've been through this many, many, many times, but it, both here and at public meetings, and we've provided information on the web, I'm not going to belabor it, but just suffice it to remind the board that that athletics and PE project includes these renovations to the east gym as well as the field lighting project. What the, there's a lot of legal language in the agenda, but what the voters are going to see is this, and I think, you know, this, it's, the, this is the summary version of the resolution. So there's a much longer version of this resolution in your packet, and then for Proposition One, which is the gymnasium reconstruction as well as the field lighting, this is the summary wording that the voters will see when they go into the voting booth. So I won't read it, but essentially it asks for permission to spend the money for this purpose, for the, for the develop, for the renovations to the gymnasium and for the installation of field lights. That'd cost a $2.8 million, and it summarizes where that funds will come from. So approximately $700,000 comes from a variety of capital projects that we have previously completed and have finalized the paperwork on, and the amounts that was, that were authorized were more than was actually spent. So you see the, the variety of those projects. That totals about $720,000. The two most significant ones of those projects were the, a district-wide security improvement project. This was doors and, and locks. And that was approximately $1.1 million, and it's, and there was $999,000 left over. And a roofing project that had anticipated at Indian Landing, the removal of some asbestos that turned out after further testing to not be required. So that money obviously was not spent, and is, and this resolution would repurpose it for this project. There's five, approximately $554,000 being withdrawn from a capital reserve, the 2002 capital reserve, which would then be closed. And the remainder, one point of about $1.5 million would be appropriated from unreserved fund balance. So essentially, this resolution asks for permission to spend the money. What it does not say, and it cannot say, is that this project's eligible for state aid. So we've had lots of conversation about this, and we'll be sending out a newsletter shortly that'll explain both the details of the project and, and the financing, and we'll explain the state aid portion. But essentially, for this project and for the one I'll be talking about in just a moment, 74% of the project is eligible, the, the, the project is eligible for state aid at 74%. So we would receive an, and a flow of income over 15 years of about $2.4 million against the $2.8 million of the, of the cost of the project. However, we need the authority to do that, and that's what this resolution does. The security project is the second proposition that folks will see when they go into the voting booth. It's security upgrades at all buildings, including cameras, door replacement and so forth, as well as some specific building upgrades. So we've been in a process of evaluating our infrastructure for security district-wide. There are some things that are unique to buildings. For example, improving PA systems at the high school would be one example of that. And there are some things that need to be done district-wide, and so we've had more and greater explanation at previous meetings. We'll continue to offer those explanations, and we'll include more detail in the newsletter. But also included as part of that, the funding stream for that project, it comes from the 2006 capital reserve. So also included as part of that is the reauthorization of the capital reserve. So we're taking $3.6 million out of the capital reserve that had a 10-year life. We've had, we've been able to fund it for 10 years. We're asking to reauthorize it and to put the remaining about $6 million into a new reserve to be used for the next 10 years. And we're asking that that be established with a life of 10 years and a cap of $13 million. We increased it over the $10 million because over the last decade, certainly, construction costs have increased. As the board knows, we have about a $77 million building condition survey of needs that will come up over the next few years. We'll be in the process of updating that, but we anticipate needing to cover those increased costs. This is what the resolution would look like. So again, without reading the language, it authorizes the spending of $3.6 million and the re-establishment of that capital reserve. The, it's the establish, I should say, it's the establishment of a new capital reserve, but to be funded in part from the old one. So technically, that's what happens. That vote again is February 13th from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM here at the high school in the gymnasium. We'll be mailing the newsletter containing all this information to residents in January. We also have information posted on the district website, and we would remind people that absentee ballots are available on the website or from the district office, and that they'll be available as of January 6, 2014. So folks who aren't able to make it to the polls for whatever reason can vote by absentee ballot. Are there any other, are there any questions or any information that I could provide the board at this time?
Board member, any questions or comments? Thank you. Mark, can I ask you regarding the absentee ballots? If people want them, do they have to be in person at the district office to pick them up?
I'll ask Marsha Barrett to answer that. She's your next here.
No, they can request them by mail.
They can rec, okay. And then we mail it to them then?
We hit, we send them an application and, and absent, and they send the application back, and then we send them an absentee ballot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. And that concludes superintendent's report, although I was going to mention that the frozen frontier for our, our hockey team's going to be playing on December 22nd at the outdoor rink that they have down at Frontier Field. And you can get tickets from the counseling office, they're in advance sale, and otherwise you can get the day of. I, I do not believe it will be sold out, but it should be fun. Open for the big puffy snowflakes.
Is, is, are this, is the ticket revenue shared among the schools?
Yeah.
Uh, I do not, I'm not sure, actually. I don't think there is any. It actually, one of the things that we had to be able to do is sell a certain number of tickets to be able to participate, yeah. And there's a lot of other high schools playing. I think they're even doing some rivalry days where some of the Greek schools are playing against each other and things like that. So it's a, it's a great regional community event, and it should be a lot of fun.
Yes. And if it's snowing, and you can take your Penfield blanket with you there, so.
That's right.
Look at Dr. Putnam, very happy for the plug.
$50. Great Christmas gifts, too.
All right. Board members, we are on page three of your agenda with board business. Facilities. Establishment of the 2014 capital reserve fund. The following resolutions represent the final preliminary step in the planning of the athletics and PE facilities improvement project and the district-wide security project. These two projects have been the subject of numerous previous board presentations, as well as discussed in newsletters on the district website and at two public information meetings and a couple of minutes ago right here. These resolutions also reestablish a capital reserve for future projects. The district's current $10 million, $10 million capital reserve was established in 2006 with a funding life of 10 years. Since that time, it has been fully funded and has been used to pay for the Indian Landing roof project and is now being used to fund the district-wide security project. During the school year, the district will be undertaking an update of its long-term facilities plan. The previous five-year plan accomplished a great deal of necessary work. However, that plan identified, identified 77,424,000 of potential However, that plan identified 77,424,000 of potential future capital needs, and it should be expected that the total cost will have grown. Projects for energy conservation and for bus garage renovation have already been identified for inclusion in this planning process. Accordingly, reauthorization of the reserve is a prudent part of the planning process. The reserve will be funded in significant part by the remaining balance in the 2006 reserve. An increase in the cap to $13 million is recommended to recognize the increased cost of construction over the past decade. The public vote is being scheduled for February 13th, 2014. Additional communications, including a project newsletter, will be sent to all residents and will include the scope of the project as well as voter information and the date of the vote. May I have a motion, please, that the following resolution be adopted? Be resolved by the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District, New York, as follows. Section One, pursuant to Section 3651 of the Education Law, there is hereby established a Capital Reserve Fund for the Penfield Central School District, New York, which shall be designated as the 2014 Capital Reserve Fund of said school district. Section Two, such 2014 Capital Reserve Fund is hereby established for financing in whole or in part the following objects or purposes of said school district. Construction, reconstruction, and improvement of school buildings and facilities, including original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus incidental thereto, and the purchase of furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus separately, provided that such capital costs are an object or purpose that would be eligible for financing under the local finance law and costs incidental thereto. Section Three, the ultimate amount of such fund shall be $13 million plus earnings thereon. Section Four, the probable term of such fund shall be 10 years, after which time no further funds may be transferred to such fund unless previously extended by the voters. But such fund shall continue in existence until liquidated in accordance with the Education Law or until the funds are exhausted. Section Five, the source from which the funds for such fund will be obtained is as follows. An initial deposit consisting of the outstanding balance in the existing 2006 Capital Reserve Fund plus earnings thereon, and amounts from budgetary appropriations from time to time, and unappropriated fund balance made available by the Board of Education from time to time, and New York State aid received and made available by the Board of Education from time to time, all to the extent permitted by law. Section Six, this resolution shall take effect upon the approval thereof by a majority of the qualified voters of said school district voting on a proposition therefore submitted at a special district meeting of said school district, the details of which shall be specified by a further resolution of this Board of Education. Upon such approval, no further action of this Board of Education will be required to perfect the establishment of such 2014 Capital Reserve Fund. All right. Questions or comments? Thank you. Our district clerk will call the vote.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Barbiars?
Aye.
Mr. Ellidge?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Mrs. Nasra?
Aye.
It is seven ayes.
Thank you. Notice of Special Meeting Vote, February 13th, 2014. May I have a motion, please, that the following resolution be adopted? Be resolved by the Board of Education as follows, that a special meeting of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District shall be held at the high school gymnasium in said district on Thursday, February 13th, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., for the purpose of voting on the propositions described in the notice of special meeting hereafter set forth. Two, said special meeting shall be called by giving the following notice thereof. Notice of Special Meeting of the Qualified Voters of Penfield Central School District. Notice is hereby given that a special meeting of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District shall be held at the high school gymnasium in said district on Thursday, February 13th, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The following propositions will be submitted for voter approval at said meeting. Those propositions are detailed in your agenda and have been presented to us by Dr. Sanz Sucey earlier. You also have on page seven of your agenda the text of the proposition as it will appear on the ballot labels in its abbreviated forms, the way Dr. Sanz Sucey presented it to us, and this will be included in our minutes for anybody who would like to see them. The school district, acting as lead agency to the extent necessary for this purpose under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the applicable regulations promulgated thereunder, has completed its environmental review, and on November 5th, 2013, has duly issued a negative declaration and has determined that purpose prescribed in Proposition Number One to be an unlisted action which shall not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And on November 19th, 2013, has duly determined and found the purpose described in Proposition Number Two to be a Type II action which will not have any significant impact on the environment and is not subject to any further environmental review under secret. A notice is also given that applications for absentee ballots to vote on the propositions may be applied for at the office of the school district clerk. Any such application must be received by the district clerk at least seven days before the date of the form said special district meeting if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, or the day before such special district meeting if the ballot is to be delivered personally to the voter. A list of all persons to whom absentee ballots shall have been issued shall be available for public inspection in the office of the district clerk during regular office hours on each of the five days prior to the day of the vote, excluding Saturday and Sunday. An absentee ballot must reach the office of the district clerk not later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of such special district meeting, dated December 10th, 2013, Penfield, New York, and this will be signed by our district clerk. Three, the district clerk or the clerks designated hereby directed to publish a copy of said notice of special meeting in two newspapers having general circulation within the school district in the manner prescribed by law for publication of notice of the annual meeting of the school district. Four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. So, Ms. Barrett, can you call the vote, please?
We need a motion.
Oh, so, thank you. Questions or comments? Right. Marsha, please.
Mrs. Rutan?
Aye.
Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Barbiars?
Aye.
Mr. Ellidge?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Mrs. Nasra?
Aye.
It is seven ayes.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Item B, Financial Items. 2013-2014 Property Tax Collection Status. As of November of each year, town tax collectors have finalized their property tax collections for the school levy and remitted all funds collected to the school district and submitted all unpaid bills to the county. Attached is the status of the Penfield Central School District tax levy authorized by the board on August 13th, additions and cancellations to the authorized levy and collections through November 30th, 2013. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve the 2013-2014 Property Tax Collection Status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount?
All moved.
Seven.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. Donations and Book Fair Proceeds. Donation and book fair proceeds totaling $11,300 for items in the 2013-2014 budget have been granted to our district's schools by the different PTAs and book fair proceeds, and they benefit Cobles Elementary, Harris Hill Elementary, and Bay Trail Middle School. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $11,300 to the 2013-2014 budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools and all Penfield parents, students, and staff for their support of this year's book fairs. Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. Policy Review. We have policies for first reading, and I think Camille is going to go through this.
Yep. I always save the best for last, policy review. The policy's up for the first reading. The first one that's listed in your agenda, 7560, it's listed as Sex Offenders on School Property. It's actually Notification of Sex Offenders. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that before, but in your packet, it's called Notification of Sex Offenders. This is a new policy recommended by, through our, the policy service that we subscribe to as a board, Erie One Boce's, and this has to do with how we let our residents know if a sex offender has moved into an area and how we give them notice. There is a separate policy called Sex Offenders on School Property, that's 3170, we already have that one. So that is up for a first read. It'll be on the website if anybody has any comments or questions about that policy they can ask. The second one that's also up for a first read is Policy 5640, which used to be numbered 3415, so it's moving from one section of the policy manual to another one. But in addition to being renumbered, which wouldn't require a first read, there's, there are a few language changes which are in bold. The first is that tobacco use is not permitted within 100 feet. Mark Ellidge pointed out that we do not need to say in our policy that the smoking can't be in the outdoor areas of any private schools. So although for a first read, it'll read like this, we're going to have a change in the first sentence saying outdoor areas of the district's elementary or secondary schools because we don't have jurisdiction over the private schools. So Mark will probably want to be on the policy committee coming up because he's got those very good eyes for that. Thank you. The other new language is about e-cigarettes. You'd think if you're just covering smoking products, that would be covered, but it's not. Now it specifically says that e-cigarettes are not allowed. So, I mean, that's sort of what's new in that policy. Again, changes that came to us through our policy service. So those are the two that are up for first read. The one for second read is also a brand-new policy, although we have numerous policies that refer to the, incorporate language from the Dignity for All Students Act. This policy is sort of, Catherine used the word, like an umbrella policy. This is the umbrella policy, but you'll see references to DASSA throughout many of our other policies, like on sexual harassment and bullying and things like that. Cyberbullying, all of that. So it's up for a second read. Did we get any comments or questions from the internet or anything? No, okay. Okay, that's all for policy, sadly.
Any questions or comments? Mark?
Actually, I do have a question. I just had a discussion with my daughter today about the tobacco one, and brought up the issue. This doesn't really address private citizens or employees within their car smoking. There's sort of a gray area about, is inside a private vehicle that might be on a property. Is that within jurisdiction of a company or a school district or not? I was just wondering how we've approached that.
I believe if the vehicle is on our school property, then the person is on our school property. I'm not sure if this is the answer to the question. So if someone's in their car and they're smoking and they're on our, on our property in our parking lot, and they can say, "Well, I'm in, I'm not on your property, I'm in my car." Well, you're in your car, on our property. So that would be, that would be not part, that would be against this policy. People would have to be off of our school grounds, and in fact, at least 100 feet now, which is a new thing, from any of our entrance ways, and I can't remember the exact language, but that was part of it. And that would include an e-cigarette. So if someone were an adult, it might be, "Oh, well, it's an e-cigarette, I'm not smoking, I'm smelling this." No, that's against our policy as well.
But this would also apply to private citizens driving out their children or picking up their kids within, you know, as they drive in, if they smoke in their car. They couldn't do that.
Yep, that would be against their policy, and that would be something that if we, if we could see that and we noticed it, we would call attention to it and tell that person that they're not to do that.
Thank you.
Barb?
I just have this question about the private piece, schools, because private schools that are in our school district, Mercy, St. Joseph's, we would have, I mean, I'm just, there's no jurisdiction, even though they're part of the school district? What, I mean, how does that all?
Barb, I think the law would still apply, but we're just saying in our policy, since we don't have jurisdiction, but this, this law does apply to them. This is, this language is taken directly from probably New York State regulation. So they would probably want to have adopted a policy.
Only because as the liaison to St. Joseph's, I just need to know how.
Yeah, it might be a topic for, as you're speaking with them and sharing information, that we just adopted this policy, and you understand that the regulations and law that changed might implicate their policies, and if they haven't had a chance to review them, they might want to take a look at that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I think we now need a motion for Policy 7555. So may I have a motion, please, that Policy 7555, Dignity for All Students Act, be approved as presented November 19th, 2013?
All moved.
Second.
Questions and comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. Item D, Approval of Amendment to the Superintendent Employment Agreement dated August 21st, 2012. May I have a motion, please, that the amendment to the Superintendent's Employment Agreement dated December 10th, 2013, has been reviewed by the board and is hereby approved, and the president is authorized to execute the amendment on behalf of the board?
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor and non-opposed, thank you. Medicaid Compliance Plan Approval. Penfield's Medicaid Compliance Program must be certified annually by, through an electronic process, by December 31st. This requires board review and approval of the attached compliance program self-assessment tool developed by the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General. The document has been reviewed by the District Medicaid Compliance Committee, and no substantive changes have been made from prior years. Approval is recommended at this time. May I have a motion, please, that the board accept the Medicaid Compliance Plan?
All moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, non-opposed, thank you. President's remarks or presentations? I have none at this time. Thank you. We have no unfinished business, and that moves us to new business. Quick legislative update from John, who is in Albany with Dr. Grimm on Monday.
Yesterday, Dr. Grimm and I were in Albany with the Monroe County School Boards Association Legislative Group. There was about 22 of us. The goal was to meet with the staff members of the Governor's Office, the Budget Office, and the Legislature. We spent about three and a half hours meeting with those individuals, trying to get an aspect of what the future will be budgeting-wise, are there any new initiatives coming forward. One common message we received from all of them was, next year is an election year for the Legislature, so anything is possible. So I think it's just part of our ongoing effort. They're scheduled to go back again in March, and as you know, we have our legislative breakfast in February. But the input we get from the staff is really critical because these are the analysts who do the work for the legislators. So I don't think we heard any bad news. We just heard it's, you know, a lot of people are staying what the governor's course is, and there'll be a variety of other things that we may see.
I would just add that it was clear that all of the advocacy efforts from around the state, that information is getting to Albany, and it's not just surface reception. I think they really do understand the issues, and they really are listening. At least the way that it's being presented back to us, it's clear that they understand the issues.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you to both of you for representing us in Albany so well. It's not easy to just go for the whole day and be there, but thank you. It's great to have you there, representing our school districts and our, you know, doing what's best for our students. Our next new business is the resolution for Wayne County. So we had the present for Wayne County Sales Tax. We had the presentation by Dr. Sanz Sucey earlier, and I think Mark is going to read the resolution for us.
Sure. It, "Be it resolved that the Penfield Board of Education urges the Wayne County Board of Supervisors to continue the longstanding commitment of sharing sales tax revenues with local school districts. We recognize that many municipalities are currently..."
We recognize that many municipalities are currently facing financial hardships, but eliminating this crucial funding to schools will negatively impact our students and our taxpayers. Specifically, if the sales tax is revoked, the required calculation of sales tax and property tax will cause Wayne County residents who live in the Penfield Central School District to see a significant increase in their tax rates. The loss of sales tax funding in the current year would have resulted in an additional 6.3% tax increase or $1.53 per 1,000 of a set of dollars of assessed valuation for our Wayne County residents. We are opposed to the proposal to discontinue the sales tax sharing program and the additional burden it would place on our taxpayers.
All right. Thank you, Mark. May I have a motion, please, that this resolution be adopted? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. There being no other new business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:15 PM?
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.